I'm going to open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee Meeting for Thursday, March 10th. If we could please stand real quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Introduction of members.
Steve Tringali from Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Granaco, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Georgette Jarrett, Blackstone.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Okay, in our first public forum, maybe someone will join us later. And report of student representatives, they are actually attending a conference, so we don't have the enjoyment of their presence this evening. And consent agenda A warrants field trip requests minutes of meeting for February 26, 2016. We do have two field trip requests. Did everyone get to look at these?
Yeah.
One is a STEM and you need to sign that. So do we want to motion for the consent agenda?
Move consent agenda A.
Motion made by Jane, any second?
Second.
Second by Georgette, any discussion? All those in favor of consent agenda A?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And school committee, we have our FY17 proposed budget, budget approval, budget assessment, and budget certification. We did present our budget at our open hearing back on February 25th, or 7th, sorry, 25th? So, do you want to talk anywhere about it, or are we moving right to our motion?
Well, I can certainly just give, for the folks at home, the, all of this information is up on the district's website, and you can access this. It's very similar numbers to the previous two years in terms of the recommended gross adopted operating budget of $22,585,635. We have detailed over the past several meetings the challenges this year because of the lack of the state's willingness so far to fund K-12 education properly, and their reluctance to even address the Foundation Budget Review Commission. But as you can see, based upon the committee's deliberations and requests you have in front of you, all of the motions for the budget and assessments.
So, there are, oh, there's a whole page of them. We're gonna just start.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the gross operating budget for the 2016-2017 school year in the amount of $22,585,635.
Motion made by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane. We're gonna vote separately on each other. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, unanimous.
I make a motion to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2016-17 year. Chapter 70, $10,764,934. Regional transportation, $469,116. And school choice charter offset, $245,917. Above reimbursements total $10,988,133. The total net operating budget for 2016-17 is $12,071,214.
And just to point out, that school choice charter offset is a negative amount, actually. Motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
I move to assess the amount of $8,351,225 to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2016-2017 year, which includes $6,241,740 to the minimum contribution, $1,247,165 in exclusionary costs, and $862,320 in supplemental investments.
Motion made by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Unanimous.
Bill.
Oh, go ahead.
I move to assess the amount of $2,767,277 to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2016-2017 year, which includes $1,941,214 for the minimum contribution, $488,383 in exclusionary costs, and $337,680 in supplemental investments.
Motion made by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2016-2017. Medicaid, $60,000. Interest, $4,000. Music and athletic fees, $65,000. E&amp;D, $350,000, for a total of $479,000.
Motion made by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion?
Yeah, one quick question. I know this is gonna be asked. What is the present total of E&amp;D?
I believe Department of Revenue certified $713,000.
And we're gonna spend 350 of that.
Right.
Okay. So, what is it, seven what?
$713,000 was the amount certified by DOR.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous.
I make a motion to move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $517,226 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $160,216 for the FWH Middle School, $102,995 for the BMR High School sewer connection, and $254,15 for the roof projects.
Okay, motion made by Georgette, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
I'd like to move to adopt the capital and interest budget in the amount of $205,019 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $62,740 for the FW Hartnett Middle School, $40,332 for the high school sewer connection, and $101,947 for the roof projects.
Motion made by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, and that concludes our budget certification. Moving on, discussion of early retirement incentive. Everyone has in their packet the recommended from Mr. Himmelberger option on putting out early retirement incentive. I'll just read this, actually, so the public can hear it. "One avenue available to close the budget deficit would be for the school committee to offer an early retirement incentive to any Unit A member who has not declared that they are retiring and/or submitted their retirement to the superintendent before March 10th, 2016. The committee can decide on the wording of the, and the amount. It would be reserved for anyone who can decide between March 10th, 2016, to submit their intention to retire as of June 30th, 2016, before the deadline of May 1st, 2016." Again, stating that they have not already declared their intention to retire. "The district would pay a lump sum of $7,500 to the employee in the last pay period of June 2016. This amount will be taxed and is not pensionable. If accepted, the employee would not be eligible for sick leave incentive or any portion of it. The employee would have, would have to have at least 20 years of service with the district or be eligible to retire with the MTA retirement system." So, I know we've already discussed this, but is there any other discussion on making this available to our current staff, obviously, as of today?
So, someone who decides that they want to take advantage of this, and it says they would not be eligible for the sick leave incentive, that's this year, or that's any of the three?
They just wouldn't be eligible based upon how the contract reads, that they have to declare three years prior by January 1st, so that they can be eligible for the successive three years leading up to their retirement date. And they're eligible for that $1,500 per year if they don't exceed the prescribed number. They wouldn't have that opportunity-
They wouldn't have that.
-because it's such a short window.
Yep. But they wouldn't have gotten any of that already, anyway, because they would not have declared.
Correct.
Okay.
But this, this new incentive kinda makes up-
Right. Exactly.
-for what that would have been. Any other questions or discussion? So, I'm looking for-
Once we vote tonight and make this a policy, what's the next step in terms of, before we vote? How would it be sent out to the staff?
Tomorrow, I would let the union president, Mr. Jubinow, and would send out both via email and letter home to the staff who are of, that meet their qualifications, who have not declared their retirement, to see if there's any interest. It's a very specific timeline, a specific window for staff, so that's the reason why it's a significant amount of money, but it would provide relief to the budget in anticipation of replacing them with smaller salaries.
I think that's important, is pointing out that we are not saying we're reducing our staff by any means. It's simply a shift in salary.
Fiscal savings.
It's an opportunity to reduce.
Yeah, we're, someone potentially is retiring at the top step-
Each person would be replaced.
...and you're placing someone at the lower step. So, even factoring in the $7,500, we're still gonna be ahead money. That's what it's all about.
And is this policy, is this something that we have to vote every year, or is this ongoing now?
Well, this is strictly for this time period, for, to impact the FY17 budget. If the committee chose to do this again, they would take it up individually each year, because there could be different windows of opportunity, there could be different amounts, depending upon each year's scenarios. But this would only be for folks between March 10th of 2016 and May 1st of 2016 declaring an undeclared retirement already, that their intention is to retire by June 30th. And then they would be awarded that.
And it would be somebody who has either 20 years here or eligible for retirement.
And it's a Unit A member.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we don't have to decide this now, but it's a narrow window right now, but so we adopt this concept every year, would there be a better time of year when we can roll this out?
Yes. Typically, it's done in December, so that you can give folks January 1 through May 1 to decide, because everybody else would have already declared by January 1 of their intention. So, it would really just be for folks who are thinking about it but haven't followed through with that deliberation, that the extra incentive may be an opportunity to convince them that this is a good time. Everybody's situation is different, but ideally, it would be in December for a January 1, May 1, which would have the same net effect of impacting the budget in a positive manner for the upcoming year.
Maybe we should consider this every December, then. You know? Write in pencil, at least.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the early retirement incentive.
I'll make the motion as read.
Thank you. Motion made by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane, and any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. And last, on the school committee portion of the agenda, is our regional agreement update. We actually have-
Actually, before we do that, I'm sorry. Is it worth going over the budget that we just voted in, that there's still gonna be a deficit that we have to deal with? In terms of our, in terms of our operations?
Yeah. Should we do that under the report of the superintendent? Or, I guess it's not listed, but we'll move it with you?
Yep.
Okay. So, we'll stay right now with the regional agreement update. We have another one of Jesse's creations. He's been working very hard on a presentation for us, just to get our information out on our three-plus-year study of our regional agreement in our elementary schools. Anything you wanna add to that? Okay. So, we're gonna play the video for everyone now, that's in attendance.
Why are we here? To consider if modifying the policy will provide equal opportunity for all children in the district with the resources we currently have.
The history of our regional agreement goes back to 1967, when the towns of Blackstone and Millville decided to regionalize grades 7 through 12, and opened up our original middle school, high school. We are looking into the regional agreement, the school committee is looking to possibly open the agreement, so that we can provide the most efficient and most effective educational opportunities for every single one of our students. The towns of Blackstone and Millville are assessed each year based upon the number of students that are enrolled from each respective town. Roughly 71% or 72% of students attend from Blackstone, and 28% and 29% of our students attend from Millville. The towns' assessments only form one part of the contribution into the total funding sources that allow us to operate this district. We also get Chapter 70, which is the primary funding source, from the state of Massachusetts, along with sources of funds from state and federal grants, along with the Circuit Breaker Program. In addition, we also contribute, the school committee contributes each year some of our excess and deficiency funding as well. Some folks believe that the money contributor from Millville only is going to pay for Millville's portion. That is not true, because the regional agreement is structured such that the assessments to both towns go together and are combined, along with the state funding, to form one large pot of money that then is divided up amongst the different funding needs of the district. I believe, along with our business manager, after doing our analysis, that if we did change the regional agreement to allow students to attend across town lines in grade-level schools, that it would not be any additional costs to the district. And in fact, there may be some small savings. This would not be done for financial savings. The other aspect of it is the transportation. The district has purchased routing software, which will allow us to plug in different profiles and use metrics of the size of the bus, along with the length of the routes, to then decide how we can most efficiently and equitably transport students. The goal would be to provide an equitable length of time on the bus for all of our students, and so that one area of both communities would not be disadvantaged over any other, rather that we would use the routing software to make sure that we implemented it so that all of our students would be on the bus for a similar length of time. That analysis is currently ongoing, and we should have that complete sometime towards the end of March of this year. The school committee would simply request to place a warrant article before both town meetings, so that we could open up the regional agreement to change one line in the agreement that would allow for greater flexibility to improve the education and the opportunities for all of our students, and to continuously improve the teaching and learning that all of our students deserve.
What are the strengths in our current model of separate-town schools? As a middle school teacher, do you feel that students in both towns enter middle school with similar academic backgrounds?
One of the things we've noticed, especially in 6th grade, because this is the first time that we get the kids from both towns, is that they don't enter with the same academic skills. So, within the first month or so, it's our job to try to bring everyone up to the same level. And it's through no fault of the 5th-grade teachers, because when you're in two separate buildings, there's no way for you to communicate what's going on with your curriculum, even if you meet once a month. It's different when you're in the same building and you see the same people day after day.
And so, like, to work with the classroom teachers, find out what they're doing academically, and then integrate it into my PE lessons. Right now, I'm spending a lot of time with the 1st-grade classroom here. Every week, we do an integration lesson, but having all, let's say, 1 grade in 1 building would really allow me to get into depth into really finding out what they're doing on a regular basis, and integrating that, integrating the academic aspect into PE classes.
The other topic that I could speak with is, from an equipment standpoint, we have to supply both schools with equipment for all grade levels. However, if we were to bring the 2 towns together, the elementary level, we can cut those costs, because we don't need to supply 2 towns with the same equipment.
As students from both towns come together in middle school, how would you rate this transition academically, on a scale from 1 to 4?
I'd say about a 2. You know, I think it's a tough tran- transition for them, especially if they've had different backgrounds and different coverage of topics, that it's, it's not an easy transition for some of them.
When we start teaching something new, and we assume that they've already had it, and, you know, half the class says, yes, they have, half the class says they haven't, that's challenging, I think, for the kids.
As students from both towns come together in middle school, how would you rate this transition socially, on a scale from 1 to 4?
Socially, they're, once they're here, it's fine. It's the anxiety that they feel before they come, because the Millville kids have misconceptions about the Blackstone kids, the Blackstone kids have misconceptions about the Millville kids.
If they don't see each other in other activities, they have a really kind of misconceptions and ideas about what it's gonna be like to meet other kids from the other towns.
How did you feel the summer leading into your first day of school, knowing you were going to meet new kids from another town?
I was a little nervous at first, knowing that new people were gonna be at the same school, but it was also a good thing, 'cause you can meet new friends at the same time.
Felt fine, 'cause I knew most of them from sports and stuff, so I didn't really feel very nervous.
I was a little bit nervous, because I didn't really know any of them.
I was pretty nervous, because I didn't really know anybody, and it was kinda like starting over with making new friends.
After having made friends with someone from Millville, do you feel that your elementary experience was the same in Blackstone, vice versa?
And he, it wasn't very different, making any new friends from a different town, because we were still, we were close, just in two different schools.
My Millville friends seemed to have a laid, more laid-back experience.
No, not really. It sort of seemed like we both learned the same thing. You know, all the teachers had the same criteria.
Thought it was about the same. Everyone really knew everything, like, the same thing.
Do you wish you had the opportunity to come together earlier than middle school?
Not really. I liked coming in at middle school and being able to meet new people.
Uh, yeah, so I can get to know them a little bit more before the school year.
Maybe so that I could get to know them better.
I do, because I feel like I would know those people better.
I would've liked it, 'cause it probably would've brought me closer to a lot of the Blackstone kids.
I do think we should've gone together earlier, 'cause we could've become friends a lot earlier, and maybe even closer.
Based on surveys and meeting across the district, it is our intent that we move forward with a plan to amend the regional agreement policy that will allow students in grades K through 5 to be assigned to an elementary school within the district. Look at ramification and potential models. Will there be a loss of staff? What needs to be retrofitted in the classroom space to accommodate a preschool program
This would provide a tremendous benefit in terms of collaboration between our teachers. It would provide our students with a much smoother transition through all of the grades into middle school, and would allow us efficiencies across the entire district.
The bottom line, though, is that we are going to make this public, uh, tonight. It's going-
It's going to be on cable on both towns, I hope Blackstone too. It's going to be available, obviously, through our BMR EDU link on YouTube. I'm sure it's going on our Facebook pages and our web page and this is just the beginning. You know, I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of feedback from it in the public and maybe Jesse can attach it to the end of this meeting, too, so it's available on our link there. Definitely a lot of work went into that and it definitely has all of our information. The surveys we put out to all the groups, a lot of feedback from teachers is included, some students are on there and, you know, we really tried to get every avenue that was... would be affected by a big change like that. Any other comments from the committee about moving forward with that? We've already submitted the request to both towns, though I don't know if the selectmen have actually approved it for their town warrants yet. Have you heard?
I have not heard.
Okay.
Is it worth scheduling a open house or something, information on it, whether it's before one of our meetings? I wouldn't do it too early, but I wouldn't do it too late, sometime in April? Just to kind of...
I think so. Now that you mention that, Bill, Jane and I were at the supper with the super at Blackstone and Millville Elementary this weekend and the question was brought up at both. So I do think it would be worth maybe even going to each of the schools and making time for them to come to us as a committee, not just one of us or, you know, hopefully we could all schedule that, just to make ourselves available and get our information out, you know, before the town floor. So I do think that's a great idea, meeting-wise. Do we want to plan it around their PTO meetings or do you think we should have our...
I think it would be nice to have, like Wendy did for the very first... Well, not the very first because you guys had met before, but when we kind of reconvened and just had an open, general meeting. I mean, we searched for teachers, we searched for parents, we searched for community members, just kind of had it. We had it right here and had an open meeting and snacks and so forth and so on and, you know, did we have a fabulous turnout? No, but we had a turnout and...
But maybe now that people know it's coming to the town meeting, there'd be a bigger attendance, so... So you think one?
I think one, but I think very open, so not just geared to the, you know, Mespa-Bipo parents, but community at large because that's who's going to vote.
Yeah, man, I think, I think, I think doing... I mean, it's going to be out there. We're all going to put it on our Facebook page. It's going to be on the BMR Facebook page. I'll tweet it out, whatever we need to do to get it out there, it'll be out there. But I think when people have questions, we should... And so we can correct them with any misconceptions, give them the opportunity to come in. I think it's worth doing one in each town.
See, I do too, only because...
Right.
Setting it up here on a joint night, this is what we get.
Right.
And it's a lot of empty chairs, so how are we answering questions to people that aren't here? People are going to put stuff on Facebook and we're going to answer as best we can without, you know, keeping it neutral, is my opinion, but are we really answering their questions?
Yeah, I think we need to have the opportunity to answer questions. I think, quite honestly, if we could put the link on an index card or business cards and at every event we have out of any, every school, we're handing them out too. Hey, if you have any question about the regional agreement, check out this link on YouTube from our... And every event we have in the district from now until May, you know, because not only parents go to our events, other community members go as well. Send a bunch to the senior centers in both towns, you know. I think we do a little blitz and so that way people aren't going to say, I didn't know about this.
I think you're on to something with that, too, something that we can distribute, is what we're saying.
She's giving me accolades on live TV.
And I wrote it down, too.
It might be edited, though.
So, Bill, would you mind drawing up a card that we could hand out?
On the social media subcommittee, so I could absolutely do that.
What if we have something index card size to bring to the senior center and leave it on their...
Yeah, library, anyway, yeah. I mean, I think one of the things that Millville did a couple of years ago, which I thought was genius, you made the tickets for one of your event to keep the cost down. You went to like, whatever that ticket agency is that makes business cards. You get like 500 for like eight dollars. It was awesome. So we can do something like that very easily.
I think the high school has a print shop, too.
But the high school...
Oh, Juba can do it.
And, yeah. I use... We... Mespa used the high school graphic arts department for all the Christmas event stuff and...
That's great.
Bath, too, so... So you don't mind working on that?
No, absolutely not.
Great. So do we want to talk about dates for the community events now that will work for the majority of us to be available with the open session?
I like... I just want to say, I like the idea of each school, like going to both elementary schools, but I think we should invite Blackstone and Millville to Millville.
Anyone they want.
Because I think sometimes that conversation will be both towns talking to each other.
I think in the purpose of this whole thing is bringing the towns together, so we're keeping it separate, and so I do worry about that because...
They are going to have separate concerns, though, so I think...
Right, so it's not a bad idea to have them at both because I think the one would be nice, but you're right, people will go...
I think invite, though.
Make sure that everyone knows they're invited to either town.
Like we're saying.
I think if we just put two dates out there, one in Blackstone, one in Millville, in which all can attend.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what day of the week are we? Thursdays are out. We have negotiations and school committee meetings.
Erin, what if we did them at the library as opposed to the schools?
Yeah, is it Blackstone or...
Well, I mean, they're a different audience.
You know, more, and more community, you know...
You feel like it's not just parents?
Yeah, not just, you know, a Mespa meeting or a...
Yeah, if we're really after the town, go where the town is, the library.
Yeah.
So we have to see what their availability is, what they have.
Right, when they're open.
So let's just pick the date now and the location we can fine-tune.
Yep, yep. Yep, two nights a week.
So town meetings are in May, so we definitely need...
April.
What is Millville's date? May 9th?
What if we do like the 20th and 27th, like back-to-back or, you know?
26, 27?
April.
It's right after vacation.
Going to do back-to-back nights?
Is that too late? Should we do it a little earlier?
Yeah.
You could do one before vacation, one after vacation.
Well, we're negotiating on the 27th, right?
Yeah. So the 26th is definitely good for, I think, place to be determined. We'll call them regional agreement information sessions.
Like 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock?
Yeah, what time?
Either, doesn't matter.
I'm going to go with 6, just because it's...
Or do two different ti... You know, do one that's earlier, one that's, you know...
I think 7 is too late for a lot of categories.
So we're set 7?
How do you feel about 6?
Fine.
What would be... Do you think earlier than that for other groups?
I wouldn't be able to do earlier than 6.
I probably wouldn't be able to do earlier than 6 either because that day, I'm going to be in the State House advocating for public education.
So should we do a Saturday morning, like just to hit other people that usually aren't available during the week?
Well, that... Yeah, that's, that's tough.
What day of the week is that? Wednesday?
Tuesday, the 26th.
I'm open. Throw another date at me. I think we should break it up like someone else said.
I think if we firm up these two dates, too, with a location, I think by Tuesday, we can put something in the enlightener to get into the April addition, I believe.
Okay. Could you work on that, too?
Well, once you give me times and locations, I have no problem zipping out something.
I guess the locations are what we need to lock down to. So April vacation is the 18th through the 22nd, so do we want to move up a week before that?
That doesn't give you a lot of time to print what you want to print and from now. Yeah.
And quite honestly, I would rather do later if we have to because anything closer to the town meetings would be, would be better.
So the following week, May 3rd, May 2nd? That's a big week for Millville. They're starting their centennial, the parade's the 1st, the...
We're negotiating the 5th.
We have negotiations, 5th. The 6th is family dance and raffle night at Millville Elementary.
Want to go for a Tuesday again? Tuesday, the 3rd?
Tuesday, the 3rd?
I don't know. Do you think it's just too busy that week or...
Well, do, do...
I don't think we should do a Tuesday. I think we're doing Tuesday the week before. I think we should, in case there's someone that has something every Tuesday or...
Got to check in there.
Say the 4th, Monday?
Monday, the 2nd?
Monday, the 2nd.
Or Wednesday, the 4th?
Monday, the 2nd.
I can't do Mondays.
Wednesday, the 4th. And what time?
Well, I will call the libraries and see what, what day of the week is that because Blackstone's not open on Wednesday nights, I think.
They're doing on... They're Tuesdays, yeah. They're open on Tuesdays.
I mean, they might be booked, too, so we might have to not do, use a library and just kind of...
I don't know. And how would that work at the library? We wouldn't fit in a room.
Yeah, in Blackstone, they have a nice room.
Oh, yeah, they have lots of rooms. Yeah, they have lots of rooms.
Millville might be tight.
Whatever night they can accommodate us on those two and then we'll find a place for the other one in Millville.
Well, can, can you give them both nights that we've already claimed and see which they can make?
See what everyone works for.
So the 26th or the May 4th?
I can't do May 4th, but I can't either.
Okay, so we need another date.
Let's not do it. I think it's important that you guys are there.
May 2nd?
You've been working on it for the last three years.
You can't do Mondays.
I can't do Mondays.
The town meeting's the night, is the next Monday, the night.
Can we do them back... Try to do it back-to-back, 26, 27?
27th, we have negotiations.
About 28th?
Do we have a meeting? What if we do it that... Well, if we're in Blackstone Library.
Well, let's, let's narrow down the 26th and then will, will you look at Millville's library and see what dates they have available?
I don't think we could fit in Millville's library.
Sure you can. How many people do you think are going to come?
Well, that's the point. We want people to come. Hundreds. I'd go to the school.
I mean, we could do, we could go to the auditorium for them. I think Millville's could be at the school with the auditorium if we needed it to be.
Be at the senior center. You have a big room.
Oh, I think that would be a better idea. Jane? Perfect. And we can, we can ask for that any night. It doesn't have to be open.
But I think it should be earlier.
Right, like coffee hour is probably at 2.
Well, but you can't get there till...
I can't get there. I can't get there. A 6 is fine. 7 is cutting.
Okay, hold on. We have April vacation, so there are school... We could do it that week if we wanted to do a midday. A midday, we could do April 20th.
I wouldn't be able to do a midday. I work, so...
It's school vacation.
Yeah, I know, but I work as administrator. I don't know if I, you know? People work there every day.
Administrator's end of the week, huh?
No, they don't.
No, we don't.
Only if you take it as a vacation. Okay, so...
I mean, you guys could do one. If you can figure out, we don't need all the...
April vacation, could you do like a 4 o'clock, though, if it's April vacation?
Like 4 o'clock, April 19th?
Yeah, just schedule it. If I could do it, I'll be there.
Could you, though, Wendy?
April 22nd?
At 4 o'clock.
If it was that week?
Yeah.
Thursday, April 21st, 4 o'clock.
What? We have a meeting that night.
No, we don't.
We don't?
We better not.
14th and 28th.
On my calendar.
Okay.
April 21st?
And I'll call the library.
So tentative for April 21st at 4 o'clock?
So once it's finalized, just let me know and I'll do the particle to the enlightener.
And, and explain again the purpose of these meetings are for, just so that people understand what, what we're holding the meetings for.
So these will be informational and a question and answer. Once they've seen our video, I'm sure that there will be more questions about the warrant that we have requested be placed on our two-town meetings, which is the... Basically, it's a vote on changing one sentence in the regional agreement that would allow elementary kids to be educated in either town. And right now, there is wording in the regional agreement that stops that from happening. I believe it simply states that each elementary child would have to be educated in their hometown. So we've got a video coming out tonight that, for the public, and we definitely want to share our studies and information before our two-town meetings, so we're going to make these meetings available for all community members, Millville and Blackstone. We'll set up a place for the two dates we just selected, which was Thursday, April...
21st at 4 o'clock and then Wednesday, April 26th. Wednesday or Tuesday? Tuesday, April 26th, at 6 o'clock at hopefully the Blackstone Library.
And they will be open to the public and we will be there available to meet with them and share any information. Great idea. Thank you, Bill, for the legwork on the information pamphlets and the enlightener communication. Any other discussion to add to that? Okay, moving on to the report of superintendent, transportation update, and we're going to give a budget update, too, so you can do either one.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco. Transportation update, we have, thanks to Mrs. Cobb's hard work, we have the bid ready for the next regular red transportation contract and it will be posted to the central register on next Wednesday, March 16th, where it runs for two weeks. The bid will close on April 6th, so we should have a good idea of costs going forward. We were able to, based upon ridership, reduce the number of buses, so we'll see where that bid process goes. As I say, it closes April 6th, so that will give us time to see where we are.
Now, could you just give the public, too, an idea of it's a one-year, three-year contract, how much it is every year, just to kind of give them some understanding of what it's been?
Yeah, it's a three-year contract, which the last several years has run us a little bit more than $900,000 a year for the transporting of all of our students. And that is, based upon the regional agreement, the regionalization, we do get a reimbursement from the state. That money is, has never been funded properly either, that offset, but the, the contract is for the next three years and we will see where that is.
The only other thing I would say is that there's been confusion last year, there was during the budget process, that why can't you just reduce buses? And I think it's important the public to know, it's the law that we have a seat for every kid in the district right now because we're a regional district. We don't have Franklin or Oxbridge can look at their ridership and say, well, we're going to reduce the buses on their own and they can also charge families for it after a certain mileage or something, you know? So it's important that the public knows, we don't have a choice in this right now with the given law.
Well, I think it's also, it's a twofold to remember. Not only that, but you also, we're not getting full reimbursement back from the state, too. So what's the percentage of reimbursement that we've gotten from the state? Where it used to be 100%.
Yeah, it was, it was supposed to be at 100% of the qualified costs and it has varied between 48, 50, 60%. It has gone up as high as 72 and 90%. This year, it looks that it's going to be somewhere around 70%. And so that also has a direct impact on, on planning for the budgets.
So if it was 100%, that would be another $250,000, $300,000.
Pretty close, yeah. Maybe not quite that high, but right around there, if that was funded at 100%. And as we, tying that into the budget, the legislative update, the problem has been that the state, going back to 1998 through 2002, reduced their revenues by over $3 billion by reducing the state income tax. And so that final reduction takes hold. At the same time, the health insurance and the Medicaid and the medical costs that the state must bear have more than doubled since that time period, the turn of the century. So the Foundation Budget Review Commission did great work. It came up with the recommendations, which this governor's budget chose not to address. So we are still looking at circuit breaker, not being funded at where that was originally supposed to be funded, to provide relief for students who are very, very... to provide relief for, um, students who are very, very, uh, expensive to educate. That has not been funded either at the, the agreed-upon rate. So, um, it is a, an austerity budget at the state level, um, which, as we have said, puts an awful lot of pressure on local budgets. But at the same time, we would not be doing our job if we didn't put forth, um, what the true cost to educate our students is. It does not seem like there will be any movement, uh, as the budget goes through the, the state process, through House Ways and Means, and into the Senate, there simply isn't the revenue at the state level to support what is necessarily, um, and what is needed to meet the recommendations of that Foundation Budget Review Commission. So, we're still waiting and seeing where that's going to be, but unfortunately, I think Chapter Seventy is probably going to stay very close to where it has been, uh, allocated from the first governor's budget.
The only, um, concern I would have is if we're putting out a three-year bid, how would that affect us if we were able to move with our regional agreement? Um, do we have any flexibility in that?
Yes, the bid, um, the bid specification does state that if in the second or third year, or subsequent years, that there is a change in the regional agreement, that the contractor would have to, um, assess with the school committee the needs of the district.
Would we go out to bid again, or would we?
Typically, no, because the contract would still be in force, but the wording is in the spec-
Okay.
Is, the wording is in the specification that that might change.
Okay.
And if the regional agreement is amended, that the, the contractor, whoever does, will win the bid, would have to, uh, adjust it accordingly. So, that legislative update is, is wait and see, um, we, we love to be optimistic, but I don't think the, the early forecast is for, um, much to happen. Mr. Chaplin did mention the day on the Hill, which is coming up at the end of April, and that is certainly a time that we get to talk to, um, our, uh, representatives and senators, um, and legislators at the State House. There's certainly an awful lot in play around the ballot initiatives coming up that have a lot of people's attention. Unfortunately, um, the one that affects education is in a negative way around the common core state standards. And I don't want to take time now to go into that, but, um, so that, there's not a lot of great news right now, um, around the legislative update. Any questions? And, and for the budget update, if, if you wanted to turn to the, the calculations, again, I can't thank Mrs. Cobb enough for the work that she has done, um, the accuracy and the turnaround time on this. But as you can see, um, for years and years and years, we have always split our, um, budget across minimums, exclusionary, and additional, supplemental, and most towns and districts look at it as one big number. We do break it out, uh, at the end of it all, it still has to add up to something that supports the education of all of our students. As you can see, uh, the, the gross proposed operating budget of twenty-three million, oh-five-nine-three-four-seven, is then, uh, reduced by the following reimbursements, Chapter Seventy, at the bottom of page one, the cherry sheet on, uh, reimbursement of the Chapter Seventy-one transportation, and then the school choice offset. This is a direct impact on students and parents, um, who choose to, um, educate their child in other public schools. So, that is a negative number, we choice out about twice as many students as elect to choice in to our district. The total anticipated reimbursement, ten million, nine eighty-eight, one thirty-three, which at the top of page two gives you an, a proposed operating budget balance of twelve million, oh-seventy-one, two fourteen. And then, the community contributions, um, based upon the deliberations that this committee has done for countless hours over the last two months, um, comes up at the total community contributions of eleven million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and two. And we do know that our towns have to support other types of education, uh, whether it is regional vocational schools, whether it's the agricultural high school, um, and that, all of that has to be divided into one big pie. The deficit from the net operating budget at the top of the first line to the total community contributions as proposed is a deficit of nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. The committee has chosen to offset that with that total of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. This does leave a deficit of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve. And that will be a combination of many factors, some that we can see and many that we can't. From the, um, the number of students who choose to move into the, our towns, and some who are in the process of moving out, um, that have an impact on the budget. Part of the, part of the concern around the Foundation Budget Review is that you don't control that, but the law says you must educate everybody, regardless of need. And so, uh, we will be looking to work with, um, the committee and the leadership team to reduce that deficit, to get that to zero as quickly as possible. And then, we are, we have our dates to go before, um, Millville's Finance Committee, March thirtieth, and, uh, Blackstone's Finance Committee on, I believe, April eleventh. And so, we will be, um, present to, to talk with those boards, as well as the, the Boards of Selectmen, uh, between, during the month of April. Um, I believe that the E and D, um, again, we know we have pressing needs on renovating our schools, both at the complex, JFK, AFM, and the high school, and we don't want that excess and deficiency fund to reduce, uh, too much more than that based upon the totals that we could keep in there. It does not appear that there'll be any help at the federal level from those grants. However, um, we are looking at, uh, special ed transportation, and there may be some opportunities there as well. We are looking at all staffing to make sure that we are appropriate, efficient, and are able to meet the needs of our students. If we can't, we run through the same cycle that we did, um, from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, where we lost lots of students, uh, over those four years. So, that gross operating budget, uh, that's twenty-two, five eighty-five, six thirty-five, is very similar to the gross operating budget the committee approved both in two thousand fifteen as well as in two thousand fourteen. Unfortunately, it puts an awful lot of pressure on local town budgets in order to, to, uh, get where we are. We do know that on the capital costs, uh, the Hartnett Middle School has three more years, I believe, uh, before that bond is, um, retired, and, um, I think we have another six or seven years on the sewer project bond. Uh, so, there is, um, the, lots of pieces of what the towns have to, uh, meet in order to fund all of the projects, all of the education across not only, um, the public district, but other pieces of the, um, the educational pie. So, that is where we are as of today. I think the meetings, uh, with the finance committees and the Boards of Selectmen, um, will be, um, spirited to be able to at least advocate for our needs, which are real and, um, realistic. I don't believe that there is, um, any thing that we want to lose, although we are going to have to be able to make some strategic plans, uh, depending upon what the, um, town meetings do appropriate for us. And it's most unfortunate, because we are living what most districts are living, uh, not only in Massachusetts, but across the country, where there is, um, mandates and regulations that you have to meet, there are requirements that we cannot get around, and yet we don't have the tools to, uh, impact the revenue, uh, to meet those. And, uh, that's, that presents a challenge for all of us that work in education, and are, and are on school committees. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to school committee forum. We were missing our last public forum, but, um-
Would you like to add anything?
I'll start with you, Bill. Jane?
All set.
Or Jeff? John?
All right, just looking forward to seeing people at the regional agreement sessions and the, all the budget sessions leading up to the town meetings.
Tara? Wendy?
I'm all set.
I'm all set, also. So, our upcoming meeting, Thursday, March twenty-fourth, of course, we'll see each other many times in between this or other scheduled, um, items. And of course, if you have any items for the next, uh, agenda that you'd like put on, please send them to me. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Motion made by Wendy, second by-
John.
John? I didn't hear it. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nope.
Good night. Meetings closed.